I'd like to call the meeting of the U-46 School Board to order. And if I may, starting with Grant, have us go around the room and introduce ourselves for our viewing public.
It's Grant Geisler, Chief Financial Officer.
I'm Jack Baylandorf, Board Member from Essex Junction.
Liz Subin, Board Member from Essex Town.
Colville Martyr, Board Member Essex Town.
Judith Dunoa, Superintendent.
Brian Donahue, Board Member from Essex Junction and Chair of the Board.
Erin Knox, Board Member from Essex Junction.
Bob Travers, Director, Center for Technology Essex.
Rob Reardon, Principal Essex High School.
Great. As our first order of business, if there's going to be any change in the order of the agenda, we need to take it up as the first matter of business. I'd like to propose that we move the school calendar up to the front after visitors to be heard followed by principals' report. If that works out, we may have a chance to let some of our principals and therefore hosts take off a little bit early for that and then we can go into some board business. And I'd like to make sure that at the end, following adjournment, that we have a chance as a board to celebrate any monumental events that this evening may recognize and hold to them. And with that, I'd like to recognize that this is Jack Baylandorf's last sort of regular meeting as a board member and a former chair of the board. Your service has been greatly appreciated. It will be sadly missed. You are welcome back at any time. Applications for volunteers for empty slots will be exempted. But Jack, it's always a big commitment to take on the school board. It's an extra commitment to take on the chair. You took 'em on with grace and professionalism and led this board really well and we thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, Brian. I'm not prepared for any farewell statement tonight because I was planning on doing that at some later date when it was public to be heard.
Yeah.
I'd get on my soapbox then, but thank you for those kind words. It's been an honor to serve this board and work with each and every one of you for the past nine years.
Nine years, yeah.
Yeah. It really always ended in numbers, but...
There's still time.
Probably just superstition, you know? Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, all numbers that come to mind.
I was thinking this morning though of the board members that I served with when I first came on and Al is, you know, had the most tenure even, I think, when I came on and he still has the most tenure, so nevertheless, I look at the people who have preceded me and you always try and leave the spot you serve in a better place than when you found it. And I do feel that we've been continuously improving and looking out and focusing on student outcomes, you know? It's those mantras have served us well, so.
Here, here. Thank you, Jack.
Well, it will also be Gary Baker's last meeting for us, so when he joins us, we'll try to make it evenly, you know, equally uncomfortable and give him praise and opportunity to speak without knowing ahead of time. So moving into our business, is there any other changes to the agenda before we proceed? Visitors and staff to be heard, seeing none, we will move on to our topic of the 2015-2016 U-46 CTE school calendars. This was set up in your org notes and provided to you in a graphic, one for CTE and one for the high school. I'm going to open it up to see if there's any questions by the board and if we need, we can have Judy lay out some additional information if it's necessary. Are there any questions by the board members?
I just had one question or comment or, but the graduation date, Rob, do you feel like, just to avoid any of the, we have a few challenges with the graduation date this year as far as having to make a few tweaks to that, do you feel like for next year, we should be able to avoid any of the, you know, any conflicts with that, any other events happening in town or things like that?
We'll, we'll stick...
Or is it hard to know at this point?
We'll stick to the closest Saturday to when the last student day is.
Okay. Because that, you said that, that's how it really works the best, generally?
It does unless we get an excessive number of snow days and it puts a, it puts a crimp on the students who have to take all the exams at the end and then, of course, generating all the, but we'll make it work.
So that's always kind of the wild card.
It is, but it is also an inconvenience to wait a week if we didn't have a snow day.
Right, okay.
But we just don't know that. We knew that going in it'd be a lot easier.
Right, okay.
But I do know that, and fortunately this year we've only got two, I hesitate to say we're done, but...
Please hesitate because if you jinx us, I don't think any of us can take it any longer.
It could be my last meet, no, I guess. But no, we'll stick to the closest Saturday.
Yeah, that seems to work, okay.
Yeah. And are there other questions regarding the construct of the calendar? Bob, is this, is this, will this now, does this line up well for the region? Is this the best we can hope for as far as...
For next year, for the northern tech centers, this is the, this is good. Wasn't, yeah, it's good. It'll work.
Okay.
And I'd point out that if you look at the two, I think this is as closely aligned as we've done.
Ever.
Tech center and high school ever.
Yeah.
And we didn't copy each other's work.
And I'll say thank you for both Rob and Bob's attendance at a regional superintendent's meeting to provide feedback to the region. So they were very informative and I think provided some good insight.
Great. Well, I think Judy had laid it out well and called our attention to the items. There's, as always, there's a few shifting dates, but this is reflective of the regional calendar and then our twist on it to get our student days and to get our in-service days. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the calendars as presented.
So moved.
Second it?
Oh, so moved.
And Erin? So we have a motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, passes, unanimous?
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go into the principals' reports. Those two very good, comprehensive reports were provided to the board. I didn't receive any questions or comments to feed back to the principals. As is our, in keeping with our past, we ask any hand-carried information, new information or highlights to be done by the principals and then we can see if there's questions or clarifications by the board. Bob, do you want to go first?
Sure. One thing I would add to the report is, you know from reading the report that we just concluded our five-year focus visit evaluation about a week ago. We had a team of three come in and the focus of that meeting is to check up on the center as it's reporting the progress on recommendations. We reported out that over seventy-seven percent of our recommendations were complete. They were here from a Wednesday through a Friday. I just did get draft of their report this weekend. It's a nice report. It's very clean. Once again, recommendations well exceed, sorry, commendations well exceed recommendations. There are eleven standards that the tech center reports on. One of the things that the board, the group had to do was report compliance for all eleven of those and they're reported as either an exceeds, a meets, or a needs improvement. None of the eleven needs improvement. Three of them exceed, which I'm very proud of, and I think that they're in the areas that I would hope to exceed and they are: standard seven, school staff, we exceed the standard; standard eight, administration, we exceed the standard; and standard eleven, school atmosphere, we exceed the standard. I will once, what I need to do with this report is just read it through another time for factual correctness. There are a couple of areas that I'm going to recommend some edits, but not, not many. Once the Board Chair, Bill Chafin, from Connecticut releases it to the board, I'll release, to the NIESC board, I'll release it to this board for a closer read. They were, they were very impressed. I can't say enough about the different groups that we got together to meet with them. The students blew them away, which was just fantastic. And there was a special note about the focus group that we put together that represents community. We had Rob Reardon, a teacher from Colchester High School who's in the building three days a week working with our special needs students. Kurt McGlinnis from Essex PD is our building liaison. Peter Rowe, sorry, Peter Rowan from Hazlitt Strip Casting, who's been an employer for years and actually his son attended the childhood ed program about twelve years ago. It just, it was a really nice visit and I think your, our staff and students did, did a lot to impress and to make the district proud.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? Erin, any questions?
No.
Questions? Can I, just a curiosity, is there any other tech centers that are administering the S-BAC?
Yes, maybe three others.
Three out of thirteen, is it?
Sixteen.
Sixteen centers?
Yeah. Mainly the all-day centers are stepping up to administer it.
Great. Thank you for the work in that as well.
It's been very interesting.
Great. Rob?
Yep. So I think I could pass around, one of the things I highlighted in the report was the five students who chose to participate in this year's Moody's Mega Math Challenge. And each year it's a little different and I couldn't give you this year's task because it's still secretive, if you will. But basically, you know, there's no choice of when it's going to be held in terms of time of the year. So this year it happened to be Sunday, March 1st, when we were just still on vacation. And these five students chose to participate. They came in at, well, quarter to seven, Sunday morning, they let them in down in a math classroom and they had till nine PM to, as a group, attack a task similar to this. And they had access to a smart board, all the computers, whiteboards, and basically after I got them started, I came back in the afternoon about four-thirty to get them, give them pizza and lunch and maybe resuscitation depending on the situation. It was just amazing to see what they had done. They had filled every space on the whiteboard. The smart board was up, they had papers all over that you could tell that they had worked, broken up into groups to attack this year's particular task and they worked right up to nine o'clock. It was amazing. And the thoroughness and comprehensiveness, I can tell you, I never had the opportunity to do something like this when I was in high school. And so the kids were so impressive. And we just got word after I had submitted the org notes that they had made it past the first round, which is quite an accomplishment, and now they're in the second round in terms of what they submitted in terms of being evaluated. So I wanted to give you a little context as to what this was like for them. And those students, just absolutely amazing. I tip my hat to them. Another thing I'd like to mention is, and this is good news, we crashed the system last week during advisory when we had so many students trying to access the climate survey at once.
Yeah.
And that was awesome. And that, Vince had a very humorous email saying, "I can't believe so many people are saying it's such a good thing that they crashed the IT system." But, so that bodes well for obviously response rates. We also had during spring parent-teacher conferences that were held last Thursday, we had four laptops set up at the gym that were utilized pretty well, at least based on observation, throughout the afternoon and evening. And in terms of spring parent-teacher conference numbers, we don't have the final numbers yet because we're just tallying the sheets, but it was definitely higher than average. So that was a good thing in terms of participation by parents. In terms of, one last thing I would highlight, in terms of the school choice, this is the first year, this is the third year that this school choice has been in place and this is the first year we've had to go to a lottery system where we had six slots open and twenty-four applicants. So the lottery was drawn, the first six received slots, received invitations to attend Essex High School. Half have responded at this point. They have a two-week window to respond. I've also received communication from the top three on the, on the waitlist because they're prioritized, one through eighteen, and what their chances might be. So first time we've had to have a waitlist, but it's been, it's been good moving forward. So that's done in terms of the state statutes and timeline.
Rob, I had a question.
Sure.
So you said this is the first time we've had a waitlist. Is it, do you just have more people or is it that there's less slots?
Well, it's, that's a good question. The cap has been twenty and the first year we generated, I think, about twelve or thirteen when it all came to fruition. We had more sign up, but then over the summer they realized that, probably four or five realized that transportation was going to be an issue and they couldn't get here, so they, you can drop out in July, there's a dropout period. And then last year, we had twenty right on the nose sign up and then we ended up having eighteen that actually participated. And now we've generated enough critical mass where this year we got into the lottery business.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We're very good at that though because for years we've had a parking permit lottery system, so we're very good at this.
We do lottery, yeah.
Alan, any questions?
No.
Liz?
No.
Jack?
Great job. You know, if they need any help with this problem, just they can tell you.
They better ask somebody else.
I thought you'd appreciate that, that's...
I was trying to think what you really need until nine PM to work on it, I think months of that.
Hang on.
Great. That, that finishes up our principals' reports. So the next few items that we go into are going to be pretty bored, concentrated. If no one is opposed to it, I want to provide the invitation to the principals to be able to wrap up their day and probably start to their next one. But you're free to stay and you're also, you're free to leave at this point.
Can I just say one thing? I wanted to thank Rob for contacting the students to participate in the Appreciative Empority Day. We have four students that are going to be part with us on Wednesday all day and I really appreciate your efforts to make that happen. I think it's going to make for a, I think their contribution is really important, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Great. So a reschedule of April 27th in your org notes, just saw that we have a conflict with the schedule for RED, the Regional Educational District meeting is going to be held on the 27th, the Monday. It's been asked for us to consider possibly the 28th. You won't need to check your schedule, Jack, I don't believe for this one, unless there's a holdover vote option. So does the board have any concerns with the 28th? It's a Tuesday night?
That works for me.
Works for me.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
I think we can just pass it along to the superintendent to reschedule that.
Got it. Thank you.
Annual meeting preparation. So this is like a two-part topic, I think. One is to further refine how we see that night looking, feeling, doing. We have a forty-five minute annual meeting followed by Essex Junction, so it's a relatively short period of time when we're first up. But I think there's a, there's a little bit ahead of that. Our meeting the other day to get together to amend, is that what we did?
Yes.
We amended the warning to change Article One and as the org notes talked about, after thirty-one years of incredible service and dedication to the school district, Lynette Corbin is retiring. So this is a process that we haven't undergone for thirty-one years, which precedes many of us at this point in time. And so we, we have been a little clumsy coming out of the gate in knowing exactly what we need to do. We've amended our warning to allow us the authorization to appoint a treasurer.
To authorize Kathy Barron, who's the SU treasurer, to take those responsibilities on until the PC's had an opportunity to appoint. They've advertised a position on School Spring. I'm happy to have this opportunity to say that we're still looking for applicants. So if you know anyone who lives, they must be a resident of Essex Junction, but anybody who has this skill set, we're still looking for applicants that can apply via School Spring or if they need any help with that or interest in talking with Lynette Corbin, she'd be more than happy to explain duties and responsibilities.
Is there an easy place for someone to go and see the job posting?
School Spring.
Okay, so not through a link of CCSU, but just go directly to School Spring?
That's where we have it, but I could link it, I suppose, if...
I thought it was on there. It's not? On CCSU?
I don't, it might be in the job posting section.
And is it schoolspring.org or .com or .net?
I think it's our usual schoolspring.com.
It's .com.
Mm-hmm.
Do you recall seeing it posted in the Essex Reporter? Or was that two weeks ago or so?
So any, any, any resident, doesn't have to be a registered voter or anything like that, it's just any resident of Essex Junction may go and make an application and be considered.
I think there is language about it being a legal voter.
I think so, too.
I think the first hurdle is to be a resident and then I think if we found somebody who was a resident and wasn't registered to vote, then we could all, you know, work with them and make sure they get that done.
We can help with that.
Point blank, right hand. Okay. So that process, it seems like we are now set and for the first time in thirty-one years, we will not be accepting nominations from the floor for treasurer. We will for clerk.
Mm-hmm.
And those are our two positions that we, actually there's three because there's also the moderator.
Moderator.
Is there any details that we need to share with regards to clerk or moderator or do we have those?
I think there, we haven't heard that there's any change in those, that are currently serving in those roles or in those capacities.
Great. So that's, that's the unusual business. The usual business is kind of preparing, we're in the auditorium this year. We start at six-thirty PM. We have to clear the auditorium by, well, EJ starts at seven PM?
Yes.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Oh, they, they start at seven forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have...
Five hours and a half.
About an hour and a half?
No, no. You're at four fifty. Six thirty, EJ sits at seven forty-five.
Okay.
So it'll be an hour.
So yeah, about an hour and then clear out.
And we have, there was a link to it in your organizational notes, but we have the postcard, the mailer that is going out that has Essex Junction, K-12, uh, K-8 information and the U-46 information, the budget changes, impacts and so forth, as well as the voting information.
It's been mailed.
I got mine.
Yeah, I got mine.
You didn't get it?
I got mine today.
I didn't get it in the town.
I got mine today.
Oh, you said it, okay.
I got mine like a day or two ago.
It may be coming. I'll keep an eye on it.
So we'll, what do people, is there anything particular that people want to see, do, feel as far as, I, I would love to try to have the board there early, say even as early as six o'clock, to encourage people to sit in the center section, up in the first fifteen rows. It, it's, only makes it more difficult for the audience as well as the board when we have twenty people scattered through a four-hundred-person auditorium.
Maybe we could even tape off like the back sessions.
Yeah, just tape off the...
Maybe at least a couple of us could have asked for greeters?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, may I show you to your seat?
Yeah.
Just ask, we're sitting in the first ten, fifteen rows.
Yeah, I would love to do the tape, at least on the sides to close that off and then I'd love to do the greeters and encourage people. I think if we're just encouraging people to move on down, then at least people are really conscious about not moving down instead of kind of doing it by accident.
Well, if the numbers are about where we were last year, it shouldn't be a problem.
Right.
We see that every year, thinking.
Um...
Yes, I can be there at six, that sounds great.
You know, we have queued up the presentation slides that Grant's done a great job in putting together. Those have been, they've been done here so that they've been carried on access and available for people to see. They've been posted immediately to our website and they're on our website. We have the mailer. We'll have, if it hasn't happened already, there'll probably be a follow-up from the Free Press that will talk about the next round of, of school budgets. That usually happens.
If nobody's reached out to me yet, then I would expect that to be the reason.
Yeah. And I'm sorry if I've missed it, has the reporter done their more in-depth budget story yet?
Not yet.
Well, there's still a number of Thursdays left.
[laughing]
Three. So I'm, I'm not inclined, you know, at that point in time, I think there's, I'm probably going to go over a few of the slides, but make it a fairly short process because I'm, I think it would serve us better to open it up and see what the questions are. And Jack's done a great job. A lot of times the questions aren't something that we have even covered, you know? It might be talking about free and reduced to this or that, so kind of try to get to that process earlier.
I think one of the open questions right now is how are the current changes being proposed, the caps and so forth, and the legislature going to affect school operations?
Yeah. Be great for our legislators to be there to answer that question.
So we have invited our legislators to attend our upcoming CCSQ board meeting on March thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
And Grant has done some modeling and the modeling's included in your org notes that I think went out today.
Yep.
And he's also forwarded that to the legislators as far as the implications of what they're talking about and the local impact. So I think we've extended an invitation to Essex Town Superintendent Mark Andrews and Board Chair Kim Gleason to join us and extended that to be the first hour of conversation that night. And, you know, really have some quality time with our legislators. So even if you don't serve on the SU board and you want to attend, I think it'd be a really important meeting on Monday, March thirtieth.
I think one of the key questions in retrospect on the proposed legislation that's coming down is they've talked about graduated penalties if you go over a certain amount in your budget. So for larger districts, you would pay, for the taxpayers would pay a larger penalty for that. Wasn't clear to me how that would be affected if it was just a regular budget or did that include any capital projects, any infrastructure projects? So that could be a huge swing.
I mean, I encourage you all, I have been writing to our legislators to let them know that there are huge swings in every budget that can happen for a multitude of reasons.
Spikes that you can't, you can't do, you have to...
And, and I think we're a little bit more insulated than when you get into a smaller budget and you, you know, you might have a, you might have a swing in, in special edge, you might have a swing in capital needs or in debt service and so forth and you start trying to think that one number fits all and then one consequence can occur to the one number. The change in fund balance, you know, so... So executing your budget to a higher degree of precision can have an impact that, that can put you into penalty. That doesn't seem to-
That's not the key question.
Do you think this is, I mean, trying to get somewhere, is this supposed to be adding pressure to the consolidation issue? Like, are they doing this to try to force-
This is mostly coming out of House Education. And I think, I mean, it, it has to do a lot with trying to push consolidation. But I think there's also some members in House Education who feel like staffing at schools has not come down commensurate with enrollment at schools. And they look at the total number of staff, or total number of students per-
Right.
-per staff member, and they still think it's, it's not high enough. And that's how they're trying to attack it. And, and it, you're right, it doesn't really make sense for us. I mean, our staffing is, I'm sure, higher than statewide averages, but we will get hurt by this. And there's still a lot of questions like, what does it mean to have, if you exceed the cap, then the answer is your budget is defeated or your budget fails. I don't even know what that means. I mean, so does that mean you don't even take to the voters? Does it mean that you just say it failed and you can take a revote? Does the revote have to, you know, be limited to the cap? There's a lot of, a lot of open questions and a lot more testimony to go on that. The one, another, um, House Ways and Means Committee just passed a, a new tax rate too. Instead of setting the base tax rate at a dollar for homestead, they're setting it at 98 cents, which is level with FY15.
Right.
So that's another question of, so, you know, our budgets and all the presentations, the annual reports, everything was based on a dollar for a base rate. And all the budgets that passed on Town Meeting Day in March were based on that too. So we're, we're kind of trying to figure out what to do with that. And for right now, we haven't changed anything. Although, um, the annual report is probably going to be sent to the printers sometime this week. What we're probably going to do is at least throw in some caveats. Like anywhere the tax rates are mentioned, we'll probably put a call-out box or something on there to try to reaffirm to people that it's, the base rate is still uncertain. Maybe before the informational hearing, we'll have a little better sense of which direction it's going to go. And so I may be working with, with you and with the Essex Junction Board Chair as we get pretty close to decide, do you both want to go with a dollar? Or do you both want to go with a 98 cents? So that's still an unknown that's playing out right now.
Thank you. So, so Al, I think, um, I think your point is well taken that some of these questions could be complex and difficult and maybe extend beyond us. I think Monday, the 30th, will give me a good opportunity to let the legislators know that, you know, it's obviously one of the most important meetings for them to attend because their community is going to be voting for the majority of their, of their taxes at this point.
Right. And the waters in Montpelier just kind of shift here all the time. And the, the latest healthcare bump was a big surprise. Another 76 million, which puts a $200 million programming effort in place. At the same time, the, not many people saw the Channel 22 report at a luncheon in Montpelier with Governor Shumlin, where he dropped a bombshell in that the, the deficit is not 112 million. He stated it was 150 and then backtracked. So if it's really 150, there could be a whole round of additional cuts coming. So I think from my perspective, I would go with the 98 cents. Because we may be having to bite a much bigger bullet here, not too far down the road. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I, uh, a little bit concerned about how this is going to affect all of our taxpayers here.
Well, the irony in this and in at least the years- That I was involved in some of the budget construction was that we were always blessed with going in April because there was always a certainty that by Town Meeting Day, everything would be frozen.
Right.
And now there seems to be this kind of willingness to keep things open, you know, to, to change the landscape after 169 budgets were voted on is really problematic.
The thing that struck me, I mean, it's just mind-boggling that while we're trying to gather all this critical data about what's happening to schools in Vermont, we can't get a database to build it. We can come up with another 76 million, just like that, to pump into a healthcare that's got to be done this year. It's like, you know, is there other, what are the priorities here?
Yeah.
I don't understand what, I don't know what they are anymore, other than healthcare.
So I, I, I think, um, I think that the, you know, the meeting always has an ability to surprise. Our, our attendance for me has always had the ability for me to be disappointed. You know, it's a major event. We care deeply. The teachers, the faculty, the administration have put together a budget. Now I do, granted, we have been fairly transparent. I mean, our, our budget presentations go up, um, you know, for that week. And people have been able to follow this through a breadcrumb basis all along, seeing a great amount of detail into synthesized presentations. So, you know, we, we may be striking a point where, where people are satisfied and they know it and, and they have other things that they're making priorities to invest in that evening. But, um, let's be prepared. Let's make sure our legislators know. I, I think that it would be important to use the opportunity to let people know that we will be accepting applications for, um, or the Prudential Committee will be accepting applications for an Essex Junction, um, board member. Because we don't have, we don't have a petition. There is a petition. Is that confirmed at the town level?
Kim Gleason confirmed there was a petition. I'm not sure the candidate's name, but there's a, a petition that's been received for U-46 board member from Essex Town, but not Essex Junction.
Having the legislators there would be really good because we really valued when they came and talked to us.
Yeah.
Imagine having part of our public there and having them hear firsthand. I think that could be-
Well, this year particularly with Tim, who, I, I can't recall a meeting that Tim wasn't at for our annual meeting. So he always has great attendance. And being on the Education Committee at the House level, he, he can let us, I mean, he knows this stuff. He knows at least what the discussions have been and what they're attempting to do, so.
And there's two new legislators this year, Paul Dame and Bob Bancroft. And, uh, next Monday night when we sit here together, uh, it'd be good for them to understand the context of SU and budgets. And so your, your questions and comments to them will be really important and will warmly extend an invitation to attend our annual meetings, so.
So great.
Oh, just, just one quick question. Do we want to say anything, uh, at Annual Meeting Night about our appreciative inquiry of Core Team? Just to drum up some, something to mention there? I mean, it's outside of what we typically show, but I think we should state what our, what the timeline is and this is what's happening in the, in the near future.
That's a great idea. Absolutely. I think it would be, it would be a miss for us not to-
Be good to have like a bookmark or some, not that people use bookmarks anymore, but to have something with the, with the date, the summit dates or something that you can hand out that-
A magnet, a fridge magnet.
It's a great idea.
Well, how about we just, um, talk about it on Wednesday?
Yeah.
At the Core Planning Team.
Sure.
That's great. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, um, so 6:00 PM board members and we'll work on, um, on trying to create as much intimacy in our auditorium as we can. Great. Um, so task team updates. So we have, um, we have three standing task teams. One of them is continuing to look to reorganize at some moment in time. Grant, thank you very much for your evening.
Yes. Thank you.
Anticipation of meeting.
Okay.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night, Grant.
So communications, looking to reorganize. There's been some talk about, you know, just having some explicit nature of discontinuing that as a task team, but to free up some board members' time and asking for sort of a reassignment to a RED study committee communications group. So, you know, instead of having RED be a pile-on, having RED be something where we say, okay, there's only two active task teams right now. That means that there should be one or two board members with an open assignment. Maybe they could volunteer to do that. So that's sort of being discussed right now.
We actually have the first meeting scheduled for this Thursday, March 26th. So that group-
And a board member from Essex Town will be joining us at that meeting.
Great.
And you'll be working on student involvement with that group too?
Yep. And the next steps for outreach to the community around that is probably coming up, based on the comments that have already been compiled on the website, coming up with a community survey that will go out at, to, to start, to start that communication. And that'll happen probably in the next couple of weeks.
And maybe we leave any RED discussion to PC at the annual meeting? Since we don't, you know, our board doesn't have sort of standing in it.
That's correct.
So that would be something that we would expect them maybe to fill in. We can talk about the summit because that's us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So the other two task teams that have been meeting are Leaders at Work and Policy. And Erin, you were at the policy. Do you want to talk about what, um, the, the work of the group is?
Yeah, um, I, I thought we had a really good meeting. We met and, um, I mean, it was my first one, but I thought it was interesting because it was kind of a good timing because it seemed like we were kind of going through all of the, um, policies. This was the, um, the J policies. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. And, which, there are quite a few. And, um, there were, there was the suggestion to really take a close look at those and start saying, because some of them have been there for a while. And, um, there were the recommendations that we got to either get rid of some of them if they were truly redundant with, say, information that was in the handbook. You know, um, and there was one other area where they could be redundant. I don't know whether it was just, um, like administr, just, they were already being done totally administratively. So there really didn't need to be this kind of like separate policy. And then we were given guidance on the ones that were required, that we had to have per the state. So those, um, are going to be the focus of making sure that the required ones first are up to date and everyone is in agreement that they're, they're good for moving forward. And then looking at the rest of the list and either kind of removing some or targeting some to be fully updated. There are some that have been updated recently, which were going to be lower on the priority list. But I guess it was just the sense of getting everything really up to date, cleaned up, making everything really relevant, um, and useful. And, um, and then we did schedule the date for the next meeting, which I can't remember right now. But, um, we kind of had our homework, which was to kind of look at the, the ones that we want to focus on right away and, and get, I think we had picked two. We assigned ourselves, ourselves like two or three because what we want to do is just really kind of have this sense of every meeting, we want to start kind of chipping away and getting stuff done and moving forward. So I felt, I felt like it was a really good meeting.
Yeah. I mean, we'll be going to the SU. There's eight policies being recommended for removal. Um, and there's two other policies that are actually coming up. There are G policies, so there's staff policies. And they have to do with employee termination. Um, and this was just to kind of tighten it up so that we, the same termination elements and timelines worked for certified staff as well as support staff and professional staff. And the other one has to do with, um, ACA compliance, um, for the healthcare compliance, where we needed to, again, make sure that what our internal policies were, we're going to match and, and fall within the ACA requirements. So it was good. I mean, we, we'd had a couple of, um, non-meetings, but we were able to get a lot done in that one. And I think we've got some, some new spring to our step. We'll be losing our, our Chair of the Committee, Gary, who, um, who was serving as Chair of that committee for the last, um, few months. And so we'll need to reorganize when we get into the SU side of things. After our, after our meeting, we get into U-46 reorg. Great. And then Leaders at Work met. And, um, in your org, there was a link to the updated, um, draft of the annual work plan. This is the Chittenden Central Supervisory Union Annual Work Plan. And, you know, we did a lot of discussion about really trying to pare that down so that it was either the, um, the absolute requirements, the continuation so that we could have completion of a requirement, and the emphasis on the RED study. And where that's going to go, uh, both now during study and then following study depending upon what the voter's, um, conclusion is. So that is a task team update. U-40, uh, the Chittenden Central Supervisory Union Board will meet on the 30th, as we talked about. And, um, central in there is the legislative update. We'll spend about an hour doing that. Um, we'll be brought up to speed on some of the latest S-BAC and how it is going to affect school action planning. Postponing most likely school action planning out to September to make sure we have the results. We'll be revisiting and looking for our Act 153 waiver, uh, or an extension of that waiver. We have a one-year waiver now. Um, we'll be diving into the SU methodology, uh, SU's assessment methodology that came up during budget season when we looked at IT and we looked at food service and others. Um, we'll have the policy, the annual work plan, and then some consent agenda. It should be a, um, full meeting and I'm, I'm excited about, um, if I read these correctly, we have confirmation from all those legislators that are attending. That's great.
That same day.
I think this, this engagement in, with our legislators, unfortunately, it's partly because it's sparked by enormous changes in our educational system, which aren't always serve kids well in the process of that change. But I really appreciate them making the time to come and talk with us. Um, that's going to bring us to the consent agenda. Gary still hasn't joined us.
Forgot about us.
He's posting. He might have had conversations with his family.
So for, um, for the consent agenda, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that Ben updated the org notes, um, this afternoon. So there's some additional, um, elements in there. And, um, for the purposes of going into this, I need to explain each one. The consent agenda has the following items for approval. It approves the warrants, which is routine. Approves the meeting minutes from February 16th, 2015. It has recommendations for professional appointment. Do I have the latest one? So I'm going to say, um, correct me Judy after I'm done. We have to say name and position, right?
Yes.
So Lindsay Van Olen, Vanoli, math teacher at EHS. Nicholas Stokes as coral director at EHS. Ira Isham as special educator, resource room at EHS. And Ashley Hanlon as special educator, behavior specialist at EHS.
And then do you want me to add?
Yeah.
The ones, okay, and Maude Murphy, school counselor for EHS, is being hand-carried in. Benjamin Scoglan, uh, school counselor at EHS, replacing Lori Thompson, who's retiring. Emmy Charone, who's a guidance coun, being recommended as a guidance counselor for CTE, replacing Lynn Vera, who's retiring. Richard Fetterman, uh, as driver education teacher, um, for CTE. And that's it.
Yeah.
And there's eight?
Okay. You count those, I'll count these. I have four.
Um, well, also there's the approval of the letter of resignation from, uh, James Patterson and from Christina Bolton. A reduction in force, um, which is in keeping with our master agreement. agreement for timely notification. This is in the event of a budget defeat or a change in the budget that we've passed and presenting to our voters. Where, where there's a, that in total, there are four individuals affected, for a total of approximately, I think it's like one point four three FTE.
So, altogether, it's two point one eight seven.
Okay, two point one eight seven. So, those names, that, or, I don't think we need to-
I don't think we need to have the names, but two we know because of the elimination of our JR OTC program. And the other two were based on registration.
Registration.
Enrollment.
Issuance of employment contracts. This is our annual authorization to reissue U forty-six Teachers and Administrators Employment Contracts. Recognize Board that we're going to divvy up some contracts if this passes, and we'll do some signing. And then the approval of the leave of absence, absent request for Jefferson Goodrich from his social studies position, and Jennifer Luck. That is the consent agenda for this evening. Is there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Can I ask a question, Brian?
Just pull, if you're, if there's, if you have-
I have a question then.
Okay.
Can I, can I pull the request for leave of absence, please?
Yeah. Anyone else wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No, I was, I was going to ask the same one.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the removal of the leave of absence?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded?
Seconded.
Jack, all those in favor?
I have.
That passes?
I also had a, is it, I had the, the request for change in FTE. Sorry, did you already bring that one up for, from Jill Kleiman?
Yeah, that's an addition.
That was an addition, okay.
That was hand-carried in tonight.
Okay.
There's an addition to that, to the, to that are listed in, in here.
So-
Is that?
Yep. So, we'll, we'll take, so what I'd like to do is, we have the approval of the leave of absence that is on the floor now to be considered. We'll open this up for discussion in a second. But I'd like to ensure that people know that we're talking about an approval, leave of absence of Jefferson Goodrich from his social studies position, Jennifer Luck, and a reduction in FTE as a part-time leave from Jill Kleiman. So, there are three. So, discussion questions?
Judy, I had a question for you. Can you refresh my memory or explain to me, what is the, when someone asks for a leave of absence, basically, what, can you tell me what that means? Does that mean that we are holding their job for them? And is there a limit on the amount of time we can do that? And also, what are the ramifications as far as benefits, salary cost to the district? If you could just explain that to me.
So, in the case of Jeff Goodrich, this was his first year of requesting a leave to see if the Athletic Director position was something that would be a good fit for him professionally. We're actually, and you'll, you'll receive an update on this in April, looking at some changes set to that position. But I think this, in, in this particular case, it'll be cost-neutral in that he's not looking for anything additional. He just wants that assurance or that security for one more year, that this transition is, in fact, going to be a good fit.
So, the Director of Athletics and Student Activities is an administrative position.
Correct.
It's outside of the collective bargaining unit. And it would also mean that he would, all his seniority and as a teacher, would be lost. So, it's, it's sort of like a, sort of like that sense of-
So, by, so by requesting this leave of ab- absence for a second year, he's able to possibly be able to, to hold on to that line?
Right.
It's a security.
So, I just want to ask for clarification.
Two years.
At what, okay, there is a limit.
Yes.
Because, I mean, at what point do we say-
Absolutely.
I'm going to take this job.
Yeah.
Okay. Because, because I, am I all, would I also, as far as the position that he has vacated, that leaves that in limbo, correct?
Well, the person, I think, that filled it this year, you know, based on registration requirements, would be available. So, we would have some continuity in that position.
But that's, that's a little bit of a crapshoot for us, right? Just from the standpoint of, if we're hiring the person that's going to take the vacated position, we have to disclose to them, right, that-
It's a one-year temporary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in all honesty, Judy, does that put us in a disadvantageous position to get a, a person?
Right. Not in that curriculum content area. Some were more difficult than others.
I mean, I'm just, this is not person-specific in any way.
No, no, no.
This is just a very general question.
Right.
Wanting to understand.
It is a, it is a means for us to grow leadership.
Okay.
And to help-
To recruit leadership.
And to help recruit into those positions that oftentimes require much different schedule, many, many, many more hours, to see how that fits into your family life. And, and in Jeff's case, you know, he was strongly connected to his students in classroom. And so, being pulled, you know, taking that step out of your classroom, when that's been your passion for many, many years, is, is a big change. So, you know, we do this to continue to support his transition. He, we've had an incredible year this year under his leadership as our Athletic Director. And I'm so pleased to see that he brought that teaching aspect into it by actually diva-, you know, checking on students' progress, academic progress throughout the year, and, and requiring plans to be written. So, our athletes' academics came first and did a lot of support to make sure they were successful in their academic classes. So, he's enriched it in many ways already, and we hope to grow some of those pieces. In Jill Kleiman's case, that leave allows us to not have to make a RIF in that area. So, that does have a benefit to the district. So, we're actually preserving the, the staff that we have without making a reduction because of her request to, to ask for half-time position.
But the part, but the, but the, where the leave part comes in, though, is she would be, we can't put someone else in that job. That's her job. Like, next year, if, if we decide to go back to a-
Right.
Right.
That is her job that's saved.
Okay.
But we aren't, aren't needing to fill it either. So, it doesn't require us to recruit.
Okay.
Spend the time on a hiring process. There's a savings of a half-time position that's voluntary. So, it, it's a benefit to the district. Any leave that comes under my consideration has, I have to see a benefit-
Right.
-to the district. So, and then, let's see, the third one was Jennifer Luck. And you had, that's another person who's been in professional transition with supporting TAP, the TAP program. And she'd like to continue that for another year.
Okay.
And we'll see where that lands, so.
Okay. So, that position has, because of that, that full-time position has kind of been split in half.
Mm-hmm.
And you feel that that's successful with having kind of one person?
It's been very successful. And again, that request allows us not to have to reduce, make any reduction in force in that area. So, when we came forward with reductions, RIF notices tonight, those leaves helped us to not have to further reduce staff that-
Which is great. I think the only thing that occurred to me was just like, you know, sometimes I think, if you have a person, you know, sometime, if you kind of have one foot here, but, you know, but obviously, this is very individual-based, and you know these people very well, and you know what's the best, I think that's the only thing, is I just, you know, at some point, it's like, you know, because also, I'm, I'm thinking of the other person that's trying to do that job, too, and then being able to fully commit and invest to that as well. So, just, that's-
And with Jamie-
So, it just helps me understand.
With Jamie Patterson.
Yeah.
He, he'll be filling an open position and transitioning as well. So, all of it works very well to the benefit of the district, as well as the individuals requesting a leave.
And the teachers, or, excuse me, the students, you feel that they are getting that, the good description?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Judy.
You're welcome.
She hit the nail on the head. Thank you, Erin. I was thinking the exact same thing. We have, you know, an outsider may view this as one person as filling two positions. You know, I'm filling one as a full-time, and, and I'm also holding for a leave of absence in another one. And with, if, you know, and an outsider, an volunteer were to come in and take a look at that. But I think you've addressed all those issues, so I don't need to go back down that path again.
Thank you.
Then I entertain a motion to approve the leave of absences, as we've outlined previously.
Absolutely.
Seconded by Erin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None of us. For our next meeting, April twenty-eighth, anticipated board reorg. We'll be able to take a look at where the end of the year is coming up. We'll be, well, we'll be into a number of things at that point in time. We'll be welcoming a new board member. We'll be seeing where the legislature is. We'll be past the crossover point. It will be an interesting meeting. So, that's it for today.
Question. Can you refresh my memory on this, as far as if we don't have a, a person from EJ come forward? So, if we have this, the person from Essex Town, but then we still technically have an open EJ slot, what happens again?
Prudential Committee will appoint.
Will appoint someone to sit on our board.
Until the next election.
Yes.
Until the next election?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a challenge there, Erin, that Mike was sharing with us, that he's very assured on finding volunteers for the board.
Right.
So, that has to be a high priority. And I'm sure it is a high priority with him.
Yes.
And the next election would be when?
It'd be April.
Okay, the next, okay.
So, sometimes what you get is that there, there is an attractiveness sometimes to appointment because it doesn't require the petition. It doesn't require the vote.
Right.
And it's only for a one-year appointment.
That's actually Hawaii.
Mm-hmm.
It's Hawaii, though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff Cole.
That seems to be the rule of thumb lately. And we do have a, the PC does have a candidate who's interested in being a write-in. So, so that's good. And we have one with a petition.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
The problem Mike's running into is, it's finding, it's finding it more, more difficult to actually get a quorum.
Right.
But to work-
Between now and-
And Fran.
Yeah, with Tim, yeah.
So, that's, that's a huge problem.
Been hard.
It's not good.
Been hard.
Yeah.
Thanks for acknowledging.
So, I am going to, in a minute, move us to adjournment. There are two equally important things for us that we will do after we adjourn. One is, we need to, as board, we need to sign all these contracts. So, we'll split those up. And two, we need to celebrate all the service that Jack has given the board. And to do so, we, Erin will kind of have to pick up a cake.
Cake!
Because it's a cakeable moment, as they say. And so, we will be, we will be doing that right after our adjournment. So, is there any other business for the good? No? Hearing none. Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Your last finish.
My last.
Yeah.
And seconded, you don't need?
I think you just need a motion on the floor for adjournment.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.